Ready? Okay, this is a February 2nd meeting, but it's a February 9th, right?
Yes.
So I want to welcome everybody that's here. First item is that permit minutes are in your packet. Anybody have any concerns or complaints over there? Motion's approved.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move. Billy, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Timmy?
No, sir, thanks.
Jim? Moving on, don't have any business, Chad?
Um, I don't have anything else unless you want to start on the zoning appeals cases?
Okay, let's go with zoning appeals.
Okay. Uh, so we got an application submitted by Robert McCoy for a variance to allow the construction of a 26 by 28 attached garage to within five feet of the side property line and to within 37 feet of the front property line. Property's located at 645 Summit Drive, Tax Map 59, Parcel 493, Lot 33, Grid 7, in the zone Lake Residential 2. Any questions about that?
I'm having a blank, where's Summit Drive at?
Uh, Sky Valley.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was gonna ask, where's Summit Drive?
So is this, this is over in the newer section then?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean by newer section.
Well, I think Summit Drive is, is in the section with acre plus lots.
Okay, yeah, this one is a 1.4 acre, so it's a pretty big lot. Uh, they got a lot of room in the back, but they want to get, to be able to attach it to the house, the way it's angled, it pushes it closer to the front and the side.
Neighbors have any heartburn with this?
Let me look through here and see. I don't see anything in the folder. The, we have one neighbor here, it says, "We can support a variance permitting a garage construction, constructed that does not extend within five feet of the property line, no trees in our lot, or five free from, five feet from our lot are to be disturbed." So apparently that was a neighbor that was okay with it as long as they weren't disturbing.
Is that Gera?
Yes, this is from Kathleen Gera.
Okay.
Your other problem is, Chad, you see?
It'll be up to them to prove hardship. Um, you know, they need to prove hardship, practical difficulty to the board.
Billy, you have anything to add? Jim?
Just my education, when you say they have to prove hardship, are you talking about the people that are requesting?
Yeah, so basically the ordinance says to get a variance, the board can do that, but it's supposed to just be sparingly exercised and only under peculiar circumstances where there's hardship or practical difficulty. So the ordinance does list some things like exceptionally irregular, narrow, shallow, steep lots, things like that, but um, the owner, it's on their, on their shoulders to prove that they have that hardship and the board's gonna break the law for them, basically. Special exceptions are a little different, that's a different type of thing, like what we've dealt with with solar. That's kind of like a maybe, that deals with the use, and that's a different set of criteria. Basically, the board can approve those unless there's really good reasons not to, but variances are different. I always tell people, they're breaking the law for you, so you have to have a really good reason for them to do it, you have to prove to them.
Yeah, my guess is that this house was originally built at that angle because of view, because certain parts of Sky Valley are there that sit up pretty high. They probably shifted the house and put it there, and just based upon the other stuff that is already there. It looks to me like that, you know, where the stone planers and all that, they probably didn't even realize where the corners of the lot were when they did all that.
That makes sense.
I mean, they've got a lot of room on the other side of the house, but I hand it out for you guys, doesn't show all of that, but they've got a lot of room on the other side.
That's what I'm looking at, Timmy.
So they will have to, you know, prove to the board that it's just hard to do it over there, that it doesn't work with perhaps the interior line, alignment of the house.
Oh, well, right there too, you see that?
Yeah, it looks to me like what's happening is, is, yeah, and that's, that's a reason, it looks to me like they're trying to come in from the kitchen side. And, yeah, we don't have a floor plan, but it almost feels like they're trying to just connect to the kitchen and and they're, and they're trying to stay away from that well because of, they'd have to move the well to.
It looks like on the backside, the septic cleanouts there too, so.
Yeah, they, in their, um, in their written evaluation, they mentioned the steep slope, the well, things like that, so.
Yeah.
That's up to the Board of Appeals to decide if they have sufficient cause for that.
Yeah, are you, are you on the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Bruce is, it's normal.
Bruce here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things that we, we did with the recent amendments is we took out some of the ambiguous things, like where we had the relaxed stand, what we called relaxed standard for the rear yard variances on buy downs and things like that, that were these relaxed things that the board was supposed to be able to approve, and then we had some court cases that said, "Well, you're not really supposed to have a relaxed standard." So we took all those out, just made them permitted, hopefully to make it a little more clear to the board too, that if somebody's asking for a variance, it has to be hardship, it has to be something that they really have to prove. The, the easier things, we've just said, "We're just gonna allow those, we're not gonna have this kind of ambiguous part in the ordinance anymore."
Yeah, that was, that was, that was such a, I think, wise move and, and, you know, well thought out and well done personally, because.
Any guys anything without it is, or just let it go down to the zoning board? Send it going down? Okay, Chad, we want the next one, it's up to you.
Okay. Uh, so you should have a plat for Loadstone subdivision? This is, um, a new subdivision option with Camp Road. We looked at the preliminary plat last month, and it was granted approval, it's 24 lots. Uh, I have everything except they're still working on the HOA documents, and I have an estimate, but haven't had a bond yet. So I would hold the plat until we got the bond, um, then the approval will be conditioned.
How many more up there, Billy, do you know?
I, I, I don't know, I, I, I mean.
If you look the, sorry.
I, um, I, I, I just don't understand the wisdom of some of these things where, you know, they're forcing lots in just to create extra lots, like, it's just.
Yeah, I, I, you have to, like, this specific group is one of those with Wisp, right?
Yeah.
Because the other group is, uh, was an EPT property.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at that, in this part of the plat down here, there's a little chart. Um, there are 2,223 total dwelling units in the PRD that are approved. That was, Planning Commission gave tentative approval for that many, then with the ability to come back in for final approval on each section, and if you look at the number above that, there's still 1,590 units that could be developed.
That's scary.
So they're still, they've only got 700 units up there, or whatever.
I don't, I'd be really, I mean, maybe that'll ever happen, but you're saying that's potential, or what?
Yeah, that's what the Planning Commission, I think in '06 approved that many.
The current structure will never, the current infrastructure will never be.
Yeah, so things like water and things, you know, that's something that Public Utilities has to keep an eye on, make sure that's a lot as things expand. Certainly plans have changed, you know, originally it was all going to be DC Development developing all of that. Then with the bankruptcy, EPT is now the single entity that all these have to go through. So every time somebody wants to do one of these, whether it's NLP or some of the different people, EPT is the one who kind of keeps an eye on it and almost distributes those lots throughout, so we don't get a, um, you know, people butting heads about who gets what amount of lots. So EPT has to approve it and say, "Yes, we've seen this preliminary plan, it's okay to move forward," so I do have a letter from them, so.
So do they, do they also address, like, the, things like, are big, that, right now you've seen complaints from North Camp about entrances and trash and collection points and stuff like that. That's not part of this process you're talking about, is it?
Well, you know, the trash and things like that aren't addressed in the zoning ordinance, or, um, of course, that's out of zoning, but a lot of these, like, the ones here in Loadstone are in zoning, but they don't really address that in terms of a community trash receptacle. We have rental units would have to have bare proof trash. That's just something that's not really addressed, um.
Does it get addressed in the HOA?
They could, but the county doesn't, you know, the county doesn't say, "If you develop 10 lots, you have to have a community dumpster," there's nothing like that.
So is that, is that, is that something that we can potentially suggest to zoning people? Because, I mean, personally, when you look at the impact of not, of, of having common trash receptacles for places like Blakesley and Holy Cross and some of the other places that have it, and the lack of trash blowing around the subdivisions from, you know, people over stuffing them in front of their houses and, and, you know, the lack of bear interest in our community and stuff, you know, they, they might pass through, but they don't hang around. It just seems to me at some point that that should really be a target for making these subdivisions better.
It could be, I mean, it would take, uh, I mean, you can suggest it, but to require it would take an amendment either to the zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance, that depending on a certain number of lots being created, you're.
Well, like, this, this subdivision, or this, whatever it's gonna be, this section or whatever itself, could almost handle its own area designated for that kind of stuff that would make it a better place for the, the property owners, make it a better for, you know, everybody involved. So I, if there's, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but in my mind, I think we'd be doing everybody a service to, to start, at least trying to make that a, some type of requirement for subdivisions that are being approved that have more than blank number of lots, whatever that might be, to just make for better communities.
We had a trouble with one of Gilmore, remember, that's where that came up at. When I met with those people up there at that, at that time, rode around, took me around, wanted to show me where the, I mean, it's, it's definitely an issue, but, you know, you see this building as an easement right here, you think that would be a a trash area or not? See up there in the corner on Lot 1?
I think that stormwater management would be my bet, but, um, I, I don't know, I, I just feel like, it, I just feel like, you know, having, what is that, 20 some lots?
25.
25 lots, and you're essentially creating, you know, I, I mean, I look at it from a number of ways. Some, you know, each one of those people that buy a house or build a house up there are gonna end up putting one or two trash receptacles in front of their place, which adds another $600 a year to them and, or 600 plus in expense, plus building the trash receptacle, plus everything else that they end up having to do. And, and the, and it makes the communities look like crap after three or four years. Those trash receptacle things are all grayed out and everything else versus build one thing up front, add a small fee to the, I mean, like, it's minimal. I, I think the average property owner in Blakesley might be paying $200 a year towards trash. And, and we don't have problems, we, we eliminated those, those things way back when, and I just think that it makes the communities look better and I, I, I just think that's something that we should think about. I think it'd be a real advantage for Garrett County in general for, to get subdivision approvals of these things. Plus, I don't think the trash companies would have, I think they'd be happier if they were only going to one spot and taking crap up instead of stopping at each house, and then if the bears had gotten into a trash can trying to clean it up and all that stuff, so.
Well, again, I think there are two ways to handle that, it would either be, you know, amend the ordinances to specifically require it. You know, something else you could do is, um, if somebody wants to make a motion to suggest to NLP that they consider that, you know, that'd be a little less stringent, but, you know, I could put that in the approval letter if that's something everybody wants to do, that would be a suggestion on um, that trash issues have come up, and it would be a suggestion that.
Well, I, 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 I'll make that suggestion for this, and I also think it would be great if we could draft something that maybe we could throw to the zoning board guys that, um, I, I, I know if I were doing a community today, period, we would, we would definitely be putting those in because it's just been so much better without issues.
You want to make that motion for this one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll put it as a.
Or make a suggestion.
Okay.
You have a problem, Tim?
No.
Yep.
I think it's a great idea, the most recent complaint I've seen is North Camp, right, is that the ones complaining about not just trash, but access to egress?
Yeah, and that, that development, um, from what I, from what I remember, everything in that development was always going through North Camp, that's how North Camp Bridge was planned. Um, and some of the unit owners, as that's continued to build out, have expressed frustration and asked for um, another entrance into the development. That wasn't the original plan, um, that wasn't.
And we talked about that paving at that time, between the, that's where that all.
Yeah, and that did get done, the county did pave that, the Wisp Adventure Road, they paved over there, so that alleviated part of it. I think there are certain homeowners there who would like another entrance because people were not.
I met that guy, he had it up there, he liked to have another entrance and he wanted that, and the other thing came up with the trash, and we drove around that, and, you know, he made a good point, there's a hell of a bunch of houses up there, so, you know, they had the trash dumpster here, and they had one way down over the bank, you know what I mean, and it just felt like it was.
I think they're concerned about the additional development and the additional traffic that'll be going through.
Right, that's what they're.
Explain to me, is that a, is that a case of where we've already approved things?
Yes.
But we can learn from that, and, and other things that we approve, we can make sure there's adequate provisions for access and egress and trash, right?
And I don't, I don't stop because of asking, right? I mean, there's.
I, I think some of it is, you know, certainly when you're one of the first people in a development, um, and it takes a while to build out, as more and more lots come, it becomes frustrating, we would all be frustrated to see that traffic. I don't know that that's, um, an error or something that was missed, that's the way that was always designed. And I think there will just be frustration from some people as, as more and more lots are filled out. Now, um, you know, if it's to the point where we feel it is a problem, that may be something where we say, "Well, this, this is just too many lots," but it was approved the way it is. I think the original plans actually had more lots in there, and they, they, they made it a little bit smaller than what was originally planned. But I don't think there's anything happening there that wasn't, that isn't in conformance to the original plans that were submitted.
Well, that's, and the first lot at the entrance gets all the traffic, but he also gets asked to pay for road improvement back there, a road that he doesn't use too, so.
Well, he didn't, he took me down, I'd never been down that far before, but he took me down, there's a hill and down, and there's an area where you could bring a road out, but then that wasn't proved that way, but you could bring a road out to the road.
To Hoyes?
Because the other roads that comes in past that, the development there goes straight down, and he could bring the Gilmore over into that. I don't, but that's what I'm saying, it wasn't built in, it wasn't designed into that, so it's just.
No, I don't think we would have a reason now, it's not like there was a road plan that they stopped and they didn't build, and, you know, they told us they were going to. I mean, they're following the original submitted design plans.
Well, I, I just think that, you know, one of the, one of the things that makes this area attractive to come to is the fact that it isn't like every other area in that, that, you know, that it, it's not overly developed in, in a lot of ways, and, and, you know, that, you know, when you get to that many lots, and this is not something new that I'm saying today, I said this to Gary Dom and those guys back when this first started, and he asked my opinion of it, I said, I said, "That's an awful lot of properties to put on top of, of a mountain," you know, with, with, you know, without its own, like, fire setup and its own, like, village and things like that. And, and if you're gonna put that many places into something, should there be, I had suggested they put, like, literally an area designated for those kind of things. I even told, asked them to, like, "How about setting aside a place that could become a private school or something?" So that those people moving out of Pittsburgh and DC and Baltimore that would maybe move here now because of the pandemic stuff that has changed their lives would have a situation where they could, uh, essentially totally exist here in, in, in the, in, in such a way that would benefit. And I, I just think that they, they went with too many parcels to begin with, but since that horse is out of the barn, to me, then, you know, you've got a place like this Lot 24 as an example is, is bigger than any of the other lots, and I don't know if that's a Shingle, off of Shingle Camp Road, that area down at the end of it could be an area that they designate as a trash area that's not near any of the homes, and it's for that community and only, you know, and, and I don't know, just.
So we need to make, we need to make a motion with your suggestion, so you want to do that, make a motion with the suggestion that you want to put, look at the trash removal situation at these developments, right?
Uh, yeah, no, I think, I think we should do some research on it.
You need to make a motion to put it on this specific.
Oh, no, I think all we were doing here is just, right now, all we can do is suggest, right?
Right, that's what I'm saying, you're making a suggestion.
Yeah, I just suggest that maybe they start thinking about that as a, as a responsible way to develop that community out and make it a better, and to me, it's a selling feature.
Right. That, that's a motion and a, and a suggestion.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Any concerns about it? All in favor? All opposed? So move, that's all I was getting at.
Sorry.
No, it's your suggestion was added to the.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just don't know how that's a, like, if you have to, like, if you look at it, that needs to be as, three times as many houses up there as there are right now.
Right.
I mean, there's, if these, if I'm doing the math right, there are 1700 now, and there's room for 1,500. If the total is 22, 23, and there's room for 11600, so there's 600 or 700 there now, which means it could be three times as many. I can't, I, I think if we go forward, we just have, and we approve more of these, I think is right, we'd have to take a closer look at houses.
What's the impact, because?
What's gonna impact utilities, roads?
Water?
All those.
You already have water concerns up there.
Everybody, everybody laughed when I said.
And you add, and you add essentially a city, you've added a city on top of a mountain, so, okay, if you're gonna do the city, then you need to prove, you need to.
Everybody laughed when I said incorporate McHenry, everybody thought that was a dumb idea.
Well, and, and that's, that's, you know, part of the reason that maybe some of this needs, you know, the, like, the, to get responsible growth out of them the rest of the way, like, hey, you know, how, how are we gonna deal with this? And, and, and that's why I say, if something like this ever were to happen again, where somebody wants to come in and throw that many lots in, do we start to look at if it's over so many that you've gotta, you've gotta come up with things like, uh, you know, a setup for fire prevention, things that are, that have a reasonable chance of working in the event of a problem.
I would have to get all the paperwork out, when they came to the Planning Commission in '06, they had a lot of background work they did showing that there were adequate public facilities and things like that, I don't remember what all that documentation was, but I know they submitted, there were a lot of things.
But is it adequate for, for our way of life in Garrett County, is, is kind of, sometimes, you know, look, they, people can come up with, you know, we did this and, I, I know that group that represented them was out of Denver or something, and, you know, I, I just.
Don't know where the next group's gonna go, it takes it over 10 years from now.
Yeah, and, all good, I, you know, if they can, if they're allowed to do it, great, but while you're at it, we think the, these things need to be thought of so that you prevent yourself problems later.
And it has become more fragmented, you know, after the bankruptcy, when you had different, uh, people owning lots, you had some that were NLP, then you had some other groups that went, some went to the bank, and some, we've had some different applications from different people now. So it's a little harder to communicate, you know, our goals and concerns just with one group, because you're seeing different, different groups come in now.
Okay, next one, Chad?
Yeah, so, uh, Sandy Trails, this is another one for the Wisp PRD, this is preliminary, it's gonna be nine lots. This one does not require any internal roads, this is all on Sandy Shores Road. So this approval would be for, um, just preliminary approval at this time.
What does it come off of, what room?
Uh, Sandy Shores, if you look down at the bottom, you can see it's about at the end where Sandy Beach would meet up.
Yeah, it literally backs right up to Lot 1 at Sandy Beach.
Okay.
Any concerns with this one?
No, I mean, it's a little bit easier, there's no interior roads, um, stormwater's gonna be handled on each lot as they come in for houses. So there's not too much infrastructure with this one.
Any issues, Billy?
I, you know, my comments are the same as the other, you know.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
We gotta throw in the suggestion about the trash.
Yeah, yeah, voting on it right now.
The full, good idea, one question, Chad, maybe. When, when we approve these, do you or somebody look at, um, what your requirements are for water or what your capacity is? You just look to see if there's available ERUs, is that what you look at, or your property has to have an ERU assigned to it, or?
Yeah, so there'll be a signature for, if you notice on there, that's one of those things, DPU has to sign these and health department, so I don't look it up so much, but they're sharing these plats with them.
So it's something that DPU to look at?
Yeah.
I mean, through medical, there's ERUs, there's water somewhere that, that definitely work out sometimes.
Yeah, I know they're reviewing it, and they are looking at different water concerns in the development, we had that discussion not too long ago that, um, there may be some other, other means to get water may need to be explored soon.
Yeah, well, I think we actually looked at drills and wells back at the end of this, back here.
There's some off Hoyes, some, the county purchased some property off Hoyes Run Road, I think, there may have been some, okay, I wasn't aware of those.
Okay, thank you.
So I will make that suggestion about the trash for this one too, and I will copy EPT on those letters and just kind of say, "Hey, everybody, this is something that's come up." I just want to have everybody think of it.
You got a motion, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So move, Chad.
Okay. And the last one is Sweet Rewards Farm. This development's been going on for a long time, it's a 2004 development, uh, it's gone through a lot of changes over the last few years. What they have here is basically a revised, revision to the preliminary plat. If you, if you look at these lots, um, that are proposed at this time, in the original plan, there were several lots in there. They were, they did this as a cluster subdivision where they could get smaller lot sizes. Some of those lots had some very steep sections, so, um, the people that have purchased it now don't want to have that many lots in there, which is actually, I think, a little bit better alignment in terms of those steeper slopes. So this is what they're proposing, basically a combined preliminary plat, showing that they're now gonna have less lots, um, and then getting final approval, and this would be the last of the lots in the subdivision. The one thing I was concerned about and that they're still working on was confirmation from the HOA that they are okay with this reduction in lots. Um, because before, with the number of lots, now that you're reducing them, you're actually, instead of having, I forget how many lots are in this total, um, but let's say if it's, if it's 44 lot, 50 lots, everybody'd be paying 1/50th of the homeowners' fees. But now if you reduce that, you only have 30 lots, everybody's paying 1/30th of the cost, so.
Are, are they currently paying those, the lots that are subdivided now?
I don't know how that was worked out, you know, this one has not followed normal procedures because the original owners went through bankruptcy and it kind of languished without any development for a while, so, um, it, I don't know if they've set that up and if they've been taking fees or anything like that, so I've relayed these concerns to the surveyor, and he's kind of pushed them on to the homeowners group, but what I asked for was confirmation from either the homeowners group or the attorney who developed those original homeowners' documents that this is not infringing on anybody's rights. I don't want to have anybody say, "Well, I bought a subdivision lot and now the rules are changing." You know, we want to make sure we're protecting their interests through this change. I mean, certainly from a zoning or subdivision, sub, this is not zoning, but from a subdivision standpoint, this alignment is less dense, it's less lots, so it doesn't concern me in that sense, I just want to make sure we're protecting the interests of the people who are in.
Is this Brian?
Brian?
Brian Hoover?
Yes, yeah, I believe he is the, um, it's an LLC, Western Meadows, but I believe it is.
Okay.
We're looking at the three lots?
This would be the other lots on the uphill side as well.
But 27, 28, 29?
Yes, and then also lots, uh.
All the other ones.
Yeah.
All the ones that are in, that are, have, are bold faced, I guess.
Yes.
But yet, they're not identified.
Yeah, you're talking about all these lots?
Yeah, all the bold lots.
That one, this one up here. Any other concerns with this one?
No, I, I, if you want to approve it now, it would be contingent on that, and I would make sure that gets resolved before.
Contingent on the HOA?
Yes.
Need a motion to that?
I'll make a motion if we approve the, uh, contingent on the HOA approval.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? So move, Chad, is that it?
I believe that's it.
Next meeting is March, what, second?
Yes.
Jim pointed out, we have February 2nd.
That's my contribution. Add my contribution.
You sharpened the tack.
You didn't have to share that with everybody else.